... with them. It's actually as much nicer down here than it was in May, though.
... at 5:36 PM. Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Luskowiec?
Here.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
He's excused this evening.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Here. Thank you, clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the library, and to the Senate members, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here and for your patience this evening. Next, we have the certification of prior meetings.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, March 19, 2024, was presented to the mayor on Thursday, March 28, 2024. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect, and witness whereof I have here to set my hand and seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York, this second day of April 2024.
Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented?
Yes.
Moved by Councilmember Luskowiec, seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiec?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Aye. The minutes are approved as presented. We now move to privilege of the floor.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case each individual appearing shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing any group who shall be limited to a maximum time of five minutes. The privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public to speak on any subject pertinent to the affairs of the city government. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the chair may determine in their discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The chair shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or slanderous or not germane. The time limits specified above shall be adhered to, except the chair may allow any person speaking to complete a statement or thought started before such time expires, and a longer time may be allowed by the chair with approval of a majority of the council.
Privilege of the floor is now open. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and address the council.
Thomas Crane, 253 Maple Avenue, Dunkirk, New York. I applied for a parcel of land probably a year and a half ago on a private, they're up dead-end street, and the city came out and measured, the council approved it, and it all stopped. I was wondering what happened.
Perhaps the city assessor would be willing to meet with you after today's meeting to discuss further.
We're currently in a moratorium, and there's actually another piece coming up. So I would be more than happy, Mr. Crane, to talk to you afterwards. Maybe the mayor could join us. But these two pieces both, this, they shouldn't be in this agenda, in a moratorium. It suspends activity, so it's just not the right time to have these discussions in a public forum when that moratorium has yet to be lifted.
Yeah, but this has been a year and a half.
I understand your frustration. There's a lot of reasons the moratorium went into effect, and that's why it's in place, is to iron all of those things out so that it's seamless moving forward, and this doesn't happen in another case.
All right.
Okay?
Maybe we could talk after.
Yeah, I'll come and see you after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Arthur Page, 33 Wright Park. Regarding the moratorium with the streets, I fully respect that, and if there's any guidance or process or any public opinion or workshop or anything to have that could help streamline the process for you all, you know, I'd be more than willing to participate in a public workshop or however to be of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Hi, Jim Fisher with Revitalized Dunkirk, 91 West Fifth Street. I just want to give everybody a quick reminder that our annual community cleanup is happening April 13, 10:00 AM. Sign-in and trash bags, refreshments, and gloves are going to be available at the Washington Avenue parking lot down the road here, and we get out there and pick up Dunkirk, basically find all sorts of garbage out there and make it look better for the springtime. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
My name is Jim Enser, 121 Sisson Street. I'm also with Revitalized Dunkirk in a different capacity. My wife Diane and I are new co-chairs for the organization's beautification committee, and I am here to speak in support of the continuation of the adopt-a-garden program. I do see that it's not on today's agenda. If it does come before the council, we would certainly encourage you to support that again. We've had a good working relationship with the Department of Public Works and engineering technician Andy Bone in particular, and a good number of our committee people do adopt these gardens that are dispersed throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enser. Anyone else? Going once? Twice? Privilege of the floor is now closed. Now let's move to communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor Dovias?
Thank you, Mr. Wiser. I would just like everybody to know that for the eclipse on April 8, City Hall will be open for business. However, there are departments that will be closed. Development will be working the city event down at Steelbound. The assessor's office is closing at noon. The clerk's office will remain open throughout the day, as will zoning. Personnel will be closed. Treasurer's office will be open, and obviously a police and fire will be open. There are glasses still available in City Hall, and the day of the event, we will have additional pairs to hand out at Steelbound. I want the public to know that the pier will be closing Sunday evening to vehicles, and Lake Shore Drive to the end of the pier will be closing on April 8 at noon and remain closed until 6:00 PM that day. That also goes for any boats that wish to be on the water. They need to be on the water before noon on April 8, and they will not be allowed to come out of the water until approximately 6:00 PM that night. I would also encourage everybody to follow our social media accounts for updates as we get closer to the eclipse. There will be no recycling on the 8 due to the event, and I just want to remind everybody that winter parking rules are coming to an end finally on 4/7, so that's all I have.
Thank you, mayor. Now we'll address communications from the public and petitions.
Number one, request from Tom and Deb Reszamalski to purchase the entire paper unopened North Caracau Street that currently abuts the east side of their property at 376 Lake Shore Drive East, as well as the unopened portion of East Pine Street that abuts the north side of their property line.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes. And with the moratorium still in place, I don't know if our assessor wants to address this at this time or if our city attorney does, but either this gets received and filed or it gets tabled or some such till our moratorium is lifted. We're not lifting the moratorium until sometime in May, as a past resolution states. So I don't know if Erica wants to put further knowledge into this comment or not.
I can just reiterate that with the moratorium in place, no action should be taken, so I'm not sure how the rules state as far as being tabled. That feels like an action to me, so I would rather see nothing done and bring it up at a later date when it's appropriate and the moratorium has been lifted.
We can mark it as received and filed for the time being.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, that communication is received and filed.
Number two, request from Betty Glazier to hold a family gathering at Point Gratchit. With all pavilions already being rented, they would like to place a 20-by-20 pole tent in the park from 11:00 AM until dusk.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, after, as chair for the DPW committee, I spoke with Deputy Mike Provision today on it, and he is not in favor of this. He does not want to have a precedence of large tents being put up in one of our parks. And I know I just talked to Second Word Councilwoman Abby, and she also is in agreement because of parking, the amount of people there, and with the July 20 date, there is ample time that we could, they could possibly get a different date for this event when it is, one of the pavilions is available. I just, I just don't want, all I can see is this happening, and then we could have, I don't want to say it, and I did say it to Mike today, a tent city down there and having more tents put up for different events when pavilions are not available to rent.
Councilwoman, can I just, Deputy Director came to see me today about this very situation, and I said that we should really discuss this because if all of the pavilions are rented out, that's a great thing, and maybe we could identify a few locations where people could actually erect bigger tents. I think that this should really be referred to a DPW committee meeting so we can have an open discussion about this.
Well, could we table this for right now and then bring it back for further review?
Yes. Yeah, we'll just need a reason for the tabling.
Table, table to review.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion to table? Seconded by Councilmember Yeruko. Clerk, call the roll.
Who did the first, Nancy?
Moved by Councilmember Nichols. Seconded by Councilmember Yeruko.
Okay. Councilmember Luskowiec?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Aye. The motion is laid on the table.
Number three, loudspeaker permit request from Sharon Kokoszinski to have a live band using drums, guitars, and amps at Point Gratchit Lower Pavilion for a birthday party on June 22nd from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approved, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? Moved by Councilmember Yeruko, seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiec?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried.
Number four, loudspeaker permit request from Albert and Danielle Liscano on behalf of All-Star Bully Club to use speakers, microphones, and sound system for their dog show at the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds on August 24, 2024.
Any discussion, council? Do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments and approve?
Moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Luskowiec, seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiec?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried.
Number five, loudspeaker permit request from Lou Pochetti on behalf of the Dunkirk Lakeside Club to have live music from May 1, 2024 till November 30, 2024 from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve?
General.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Yeruko. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiec?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried.
Number six, loudspeaker, speak, loudspeaker permit request from John Dolez on behalf of the Beach House Grill to have a DJ and live music at Wright Park Beach from May 1, 2024 through October 30, 2024, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Any discussion, council? Okay, do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approved? Moved by Councilmember Luskowiec, seconded by Councilmember Ni, uh, Yeruko. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiec?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried. Will now move to reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilmember Luskowiec?
Yes, I want to thank Mayor Kate and her team. The City of Dunkirk sign is back up in its completion on Third and Main. There is an economic development meeting April 15 at 4:00 PM in the conference room of the Economic Development Department, which is in the Stearns Building, which is next to City Hall. I have a question for Chief Portolano. Is there going to be any leeway regarding parking on certain main streets or throughout the city on April 8 for the eclipse or the days leading to April 8?
I had a discussion with the mayor on this a couple weeks ago, and as the mayor said, April 7, the day before, will be the day we change back to weekly, daily parking. We will do the best we can. I don't want people leaving our community with a $20 parking ticket, but we'll monitor it, and if they are in the way for access to emergency vehicles or block a road, we will take the appropriate action, but I will advise our shift supervisors to relax the parking as much as they possibly can.
Thank you very much. I want to, calling all fishermen and women, the Department of Environmental Conservation has reconstructed the Dunkirk Harbor fishing platform with slip-resistant decking, two benches, solar-powered lighting, and parking. Randy, do you want, have any more to add to that? Also, where exactly is this located? Where should people park, and how does one walk to this location?
Sure. It's, that's got a nice history. It's been reconstructed by DEC. It's in wonderful shape now. Parking for that is to the east of the Resource Center, kind of, if you go straight ahead from Brigham Road carefully through Route 5, you, parking is right there. Our Parks Division, Jason Silovich and his people mow the lawn, as a courtesy to DEC to keep that open, and that's where you'd park, and then walk along the path behind the con club.
Okay.
And then there's a nice platform overlooking beautiful Lake Erie Harbor you can fish from.
So when you park there, you go right through that gate and down the path, or?
Once you get into that parking space, it's pretty easy to figure out how to get to that.
Okay.
Just take your fishing rod, fishing license, and all the rules and regulations, catch your fish, come back and cook them, and enjoy the city of Dunkirk.
Thank you, thank you. Dunkirk has so much to offer. We have a lot of hope, and I know we will recover from our current challenging fiscal situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yeruko?
I have a question about the dog control officer. Where are we at with applicants? Are we close to hiring someone that you're aware of?
We've had one person respond that we're going to bring back in for a
We've had one person respond that we're going to bring back in for a second interview to meet with Officer Resomalsky when he gets back from vacation. But
Okay.
You're more than welcome to go take care of the dogs, because I'm doing it.
I don't want to. I just have had some residents that have reached out to me, and they were appalled that, you know, there was some dog that wasn't taken care of. And I understand, but, you know, I just didn't know where we were at with that. I knew the job had been posted and wanted to see if we had.
Yep, we had nobody respond.
Great. Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
There will be no curbside recycling on Monday, and it's not due to our eclipse. It's because the landfill is closed. Reminder to all our residents, please do not place ranches, brush limbs, or logs at the curb. Our curbside brush collection will begin in May, so follow your calendar, and it'll show you the week that your award will be picked up. If not, Lucas Avenue Yard is open now, Monday through Saturday, nine to two. Spring is here. It's a time for home improvements. Please check with our city code enforcement officers if you're planning on doing any remodeling, outside exterior remodeling, before you begin working on roofs, fences, and sidewalks, et cetera. And just to let Jim and Diane know, there is a resolution in the works for the Adopt a Garden. It just didn't make it to today's platform. You're not forgotten. Thank you. I'm done.
Thanks so much, councilmember. You all have covered what I had to say, so we'll move on. It appears there is no unfinished business, so we'll now address the prefiled resolutions. Clerk, please introduce Resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution twenty-five, resolution authorizing extension and amendments to discovery reform services agreement.
Is there any discussion, council?
Yes. There is an additional fee in that. Can someone explain that money amount in there when we just had a discussion last week, Wednesday, on budget? Was this budgeted?
This is, I can address this.
Go ahead, please.
This is grant. Through the cooperation, the great cooperation we have with the DA's office, as part of police reform and discovery issues, the burden that they put on the DA's office and law enforcement, a grant became available. We've worked with the DA's office. This money will go directly towards a purchase of two machines that we can use to scan and copy the documents we need to get to the DA's office for every arrest that we make. So we will get these two machines free of charge through this grant and through the great cooperation we have with the DA's office.
Thank you for making that very clear.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll for the vote on Resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. The resolution has received sufficient support and is hereby adopted. Now we move on to new business. Is there any new business to be discussed tonight?
Yes, there is from the city attorney's office. So I have presented to city council a walk-in resolution twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four. This is a carbon copy of the resolution approved last week, with the only difference being that the resolution approved last week was A nine five eight nine, while this resolution is for S eight nine four one. So procedurally, last week's resolution authorized the Assembly and Assemblyman Goodell to, excuse me, to introduce the Dunkirk Fiscal Recovery Act to the Assembly. This Home Rule Resolution request will authorize Senator Borello to introduce S eight nine four one, which is a carbon copy of the Assembly Bill into the State Senate. The reason it's coming as a walk-on resolution so late was we only received Senate Bill at the end of the Business Day yesterday. And with the budget conversations beginning last week, the Assemblymen wanted to get the resolution in last week.
And this is the next step moving forward?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Ramondo?
And then after the Senate approves, does it, then after that, go to the governor to sign and approve? And is that looking good, or?
So I spoke with Assemblymember Goodell. Unfortunately, it's part of the general New York State budget, which is going through several itinerations, and it's already expected to be late. So it will be in the Assembly Bill or Assembly Budget and the Senate Budget. So eventually, it should get signed by the governor, though I don't know when that is going to be, just with the general budget process.
Because it has, they have to approve it with their budget departments. Okay.
Yes. Well, it's not even the budget departments. I know the, it's going to be a pitched, pitched year in New York State over other issues.
Okay.
So it's going through. It's not controversial, but other things around it are.
Okay.
Pick a number and wait in line.
Yes.
Any other questions for Attorney Ramondo?
We have to bring this to.
Yeah, we'll need a motion to accept the walk-in resolution.
I have a motion to bring it in.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Councilmember Luskowiac. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. Motion carried. Clerk, please introduce walk-in resolution number twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four.
Title, Home Rule Message of Support to the New York State Legislature Bill S eight nine four one, authorizing an act relating to the City of Dunkirk Fiscal Recovery Act and providing for the repeal of such provisions upon the expiration thereof.
Any discussion at this time, council? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll for the vote on walk-in resolution number twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. The resolution has received sufficient support and is hereby adopted. Now if there are no further matters to address, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
General.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Luskowiac. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeruko?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser?
Aye. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.